The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Coulter. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Crewson. President Reed.
Here.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Ortman. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman French. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Crewson. Sixteen present.
Quorum being present, and thus everyone in the chambers and galleries to please rise for prayer. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, Source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions, amen. Alderwoman from the sixteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I have a special request. Less than ten days ago, my heart skipped a beat. My son is stationed as a Marine in Oahu on Kaneo'i Bay, and he was on duty the night the twelve Marines went missing. I would like to do a special request right now that we do a moment of silence for the twelve men, especially the one from St. Louis that we lost. Thank you.
Everyone in the chambers and galleries, please join us in a moment's silence. Alderwoman, thanks for that. Introduction of our guests, any introduction of our guests. Introduction of our guests, any introduction of our guests. Alderman from the twenty-third.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board, I would like to have as my special guest Al from Firefighters Local Seventy-three, and I see I have Todd Hake and Jeff Hans over in the, oh, Keith Taylor from the Carpenters Union, and I'd like to have them, and I'd like to have them as my special guests.
Any further introductions, any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderwoman from the sixteenth.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I'd like to have Anthony Lencio with the HGC of Missouri.
Alderman from the twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Board, I'd like to have Leroy Grant with AT&amp;T as my honored guest this morning.
Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the Board, I'd like to have as my special guest the Honorable Mavis Tessa Thompson.
Welcome.
And her staff.
Rowan G. Murray. Any further introductions, any further inductions? Alderman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to introduce as my special guest Mr. Sean Weller, who's joining us today.
Any further introductions, any further inductions? Alderman from the tenth, I'd like to wrap this up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Board, we're here on January twenty-sixth, which is National Spouses' Day. You're actually supposed to be nice to your spouse today, so everyone remember that when you leave, and at midnight you can start doing what you usually do all over again. But most importantly, on this day in nineteen thirty-six, in all sincerity, one of the greatest people in the United States of America and the world was ever born on that day, Mr. Fred Stephan, our esteemed ex-clerk from this Board, is celebrating his eightieth birthday today, and he's watching us. Happy birthday, Fred. Everybody say happy birthday, Fred.
Happy birthday, Fred. That's awesome. Alderman from the eighteenth. You recognize on approval of the minutes. January fifteenth.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move for approval of the January fifteenth minutes.
Move by Alderman from the eighteenth, second by Alderman from the ninth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries, report to city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed into all aldermen's mailboxes.
We would dispense with line items seven and eight of, would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? We dispense with line items nine and ten. Alderwoman from the first. Do you want to suspend? Yeah. Yeah.
I actually had two, but they didn't get the other one, so, Mr. President, members of the Board, I'd move to suspend the rules so that I might introduce Board Bill Two-eighty-three, which is a street closing.
Move by Alderman from the first, second by Alderman from the ninth, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Coulter. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Crewson. President Reed. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Rhodey. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Crewson. Twenty, aye votes.
Aye votes, stay in the motion, Alderman from the first, and suspended the rules for the introduction of Board Bill Number Two-eighty-three. Madam Clerk, please assign Board Bill Number Two-eighty-three to the first reading calendar and sign it to Streets Committee.
So noted.
First reading of Board Bills.
Board Bill Two-eighty-three, sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus and ordinance directing the Director of Streets to temporarily close barricade or otherwise impede the flow of traffic on Terry Avenue at the West Curb Line of King's Highway, Memorial Boulevard, and containing an emergency clause.
Reference to...
That's the extent of our first reading.
Reference to Committee.
To the Streets Committee, Board Bill Two-eighty-three, that's the extent of reference to Committee.
We would dispense with line items thirteen and fourteen, Perfection Consent Calendar.
Board Bill Two-thirty, sponsored by Alderman Ortman and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Twenty-eight sixty-five Lemp. Board Bill Two-thirty-one, sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Forty-one twenty-nine Cleveland. Board Bill Two-thirty-two, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Twenty-six eighteen Lafayette. Board Bill Two-thirty-four, sponsored by Alderman Boyd and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Thirteen eighteen Hodamont. Board Bill Two-thirty-nine, sponsored by Alderman Ortman and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Thirty-eleven Missouri. Board Bill Two-forty, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Forty-two forty-nine Shoto. Board Bill Two-forty-one, sponsored by Alderman Coulter and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for Nine-nineteen through Twenty-one and, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Two-forty-two, sponsored by Alderman Coulter and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for Twenty-two seventeen through Twenty-one South Tenth Street and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Two-forty-three, sponsored by Alderman Coulter and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Nineteen-hundred and Nineteen-oh-eight Lafayette. Board Bill Two-forty-four, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for Twelve forty-three Graham Street and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Two-five-six, sponsored by Alderwoman Green and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for Thirty-five oh-four McKean and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Two-five-seven, sponsored by Alderwoman Green and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for Thirty-six ten through Twelve Bamberger and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Two-five-eight, sponsored by Alderman Coulter and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for Twenty-four oh-one through Oh-five South Ninth Street and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Two-five-nine, sponsored by Alderman Coulter.
Hold it down a little bit, please.
Board Bill Two-five-nine, sponsored by Alderman Coulter and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for Twenty-three forty-five Russell and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Two-seven-two, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for Forty-two fourteen Shoto, Forty-one thirty-one and Forty-one forty-one Manchester and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Two-seven-three, sponsored by Alderwoman Green and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for Thirty-seven oh-eight Humphrey and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Two-seven-six, sponsored by Alderman Valmer and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for Twenty-one twenty-three Marconi and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Two-seven-seven, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Twenty-eight twenty-one Oregon. Board Bill Two-seven-eight, sponsored by Alderman Ortman and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Thirty-three twenty-eight Lemp. Board Bill Two-oh-two, sponsored by Alderman Valmer and ordinance to repeal ordinance Six-four-two-one-oh authorizing a lease agreement with St. Louis Public Schools Gateway Institute of Technology and terminating said lease agreement dating June the ninth, nineteen ninety-eight, authorizing and directing the mayor into control upon receipt of and in consideration of some of one dollars, one dollar and other good and valuable consideration, a quick claim deed to remind release, and forever quick claim unto the Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District Certain City on property, which property is known as Fifty-one fifty-one Rear Northrup and which consists of Lot E through M in Block Eight of the Sublet's subdivision in Block Thirty-nine ninety-eight D. Board Bill Two-sixty-six, sponsored by Alderman Vaccaro and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and apportionment amending and supplementing ordinance Six-nine-eight-nine-three, which among other things established its green community program for the purpose of making low-interest loans for residential energy efficiency projects and public building energy conservation projects, and to authorize the St. Louis Municipal Finance Corporation to sell one or more series of its energy conservation bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed four million, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Two-five-four, sponsored by Alderman Moore and ordinance repealing ordinance Seven-zero-zero-eight-seven, and in lieu thereof enacting a new ordinance prohibiting the issuance of any package or drink or liquor license for any currently non-licensed premises within the boundaries of the Fourth Ward Liquor Control District and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion for the Perfection Consent Calendar.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move for adoption of the Perfection Consent Calendar.
Move by Alderman from the eighteenth, entertain a second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the twenty-fifth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. We would dispense with line items sixteen, third reading consent.
Board Bills One-seven-eight, Two-five-one Committee Substitute, Two-five-two Committee Substitute, Two-six-seven, and Two-six-nine.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move for adoption of the third reading consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from the eighteenth, second by Alderman from the twenty-fifth, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Coulter. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. President Reed. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman French. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Twenty-three, aye votes.
By vote, stay in the motion, Alderman from the eighteenth and third read, and finally pass the aforementioned bills.
That's the extent of third reading consent.
Third reading report of engrossments.
Board Bill Two-six-eight Floor Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, Villa, and Alderwoman Ingracia, and ordinance providing for and directing the submission to the qualified electors at a special bond election to be held on the fifth day of April two thousand and sixteen of a proposal for the incurring of indebtedness and the issuance of bonds in the aggregate amount of not to exceed twenty-five million dollars upon the assent to the said proposal of two-thirds of the qualified electors containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the twenty-fourth, you recognize on third reading final passage of Board Bill Number Two-sixty-eight Floor Substitute.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for a third reading and final passage of Board Bill.
Move by Alderman from the twenty-fourth, entertain a second on the motion, second by Alderman from the twentieth. Alderman, please proceed.
This is the bill that authorizes a twenty-five million dollar bond primarily for public safety purposes within the city. Will help us deal with some of the most critical unfunded needs we have right now in the fire department and other city departments, and will not be a property tax increase for our residents. So, my message to my colleagues and residents is go out and vote yes April fifth on the bond issue and the earnings tax. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-fourth, you recognize the close.
I renew my motion, thanks.
Been moved and seconded that we third read and final pass Board Bill Number Two-sixty-eight Floor Substitute. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Coulter. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Crewson. President Reed. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Conway. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman French. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Twenty-three, aye votes.
By your vote, stay in the motion, Alderman from the twenty-fourth and third read, and finally pass Board Bill Number Two-sixty-eight Floor Substitute.
Board Bill Two-forty-seven, sponsored by Aldermen and Alderwomen Boyd, Kennedy, Bosley, French, Vaccaro, Cohn, Carter, Coulter, Spencer, and Green, and ordinance authorizing and directing the Fire Commissioner to enter into and execute a grant agreement with U.S. Department of Homeland Security, Federal Emergency Management Agency Assistance to Firefighters Grant to fund the two thousand and fourteen Fire Prevention and Safety Get Alarmed Program and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the third reading final passage of Board Bill Number Two-forty-seven.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move for third reading and final passage of Board Bill Two-forty-seven.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, entertain a second on it. Second by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Please proceed, Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Board Bill Two-forty-seven authorized the City of St. Louis to enter a contact review meeting with the federal government in order for our fire department to provide free smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors to our residences. It's a grant that's over two hundred and six thousand dollars, and I ask for your favorable consideration.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we third read and final pass Board Bill Number Two-forty-seven. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Coulter. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Crewson. President Reed. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman French. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Twenty-three, aye votes.
By vote, you sustain the motion, Alderman from the twenty-second, third read, and finally pass Board Bill Number Two-forty-seven.
That's the extent of third reading report of engrossment.
Madam Clerk, under report of enrollment, there's a correction. Board Bill Number One-seventy-two should actually be listed as Board Bill Number One-seventy-eight.
So noted.
And everyone out there on your agendas, just make note of that change. Report of enrollment committee.
Board Bills One-seven-eight, Two-five-one Committee Substitute, Two-five-two Committee Substitute, Two-six-seven, Two-six-nine, Two-six-eight Floor Substitute, and Two-forty-seven.
All other business being suspended, the President shall in open session fix his signature here too, to the end that these may become law. Second by Alderman from the twenty-second, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. We dispense with line items twenty-one and twenty-two, miscellaneous unfinished business.
We have none.
Alderwoman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the Board. Last week, my name was impugned by the Alderman from the seventeenth, wish he was here. I will continue to talk about it until he retracts what he said, and I talked about that I was, had some concerns about the earnings tax and the vote because we have several exemptions out there, and specifically I talked about our ordinance that we passed back in two thousand or so, in which you were one of the sponsors, and I knew that the Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth was the primary sponsor, and then we had lesser Alderpeople. I think one of them was named, the Alderwoman from the seventeenth. And so, in speaking about this bill, this ordinance, because it was an ordinance at this time, I talked about, that it talked about dividends in the ordinance, and after I sat down, the Alderwoman from the seventeenth got up and impugned my name, said he sits down and listens to me put all this misinformation out, but that he couldn't sit and listen to misinformation this time because he was just tired of it. Well, he doesn't have to because I didn't give misinformation. In fact, I put the ordinance in Six-five-oh-nine-four on everybody's desk with a highlight with the term dividends because he said that it didn't say dividends, it just says stock options, but to read the pertinent part, it says, "The income referred to in Section One-four-three, One-two-oh to One-four-three, One-five-oh, revised Missouri statute nineteen forty-nine, not being subject to the state income tax, any income received in the form of dividends," and I don't need to go on with the other. And I knew I had read that online, but I did not want to challenge it because sometimes you're wrong. When Rick Perry ran for president and he had a senior moment, everybody laughed, always took up for him, because as you get older and you have all this stuff that's going on, sometimes you forget things, and he just happened to be on a national stage, but all of us have had a moment, most even younger people, where you go, uh, uh, uh. So, I don't want to impugn people's name when they do things like that because as I get older, I want to be able to, somebody to be a little forgiving for me. What I don't like is when people say I'm lying, or that I've been putting out misinformation, and they're the ones putting out misinformation. And so, Mr. Rhodey either was purposely lying, made a big mistake and owes me a publicly apology, or he just doesn't remember what's in his own board bills. I know, and I have to say this because I got, soon as I got back, I started getting people who were calling me, people from Seventeenth Ward sent me emails saying, "Yeah, yeah, what you said, it's right," and I've been getting them for years, sit down here from the black people who live in the Seventeenth Ward, talking about the problems they have with Mr. Rhodey. I generally tell them to go to the polls and address it, okay? But since he made this about my character and about my ability to tell people the truth, because I said then, if I make a mistake, I'll get on this floor and say, "Oh, I made a mistake." There's no problem, and there's, you're gonna make mistakes as a human being, it's how you handle it, how you admit up to it, but the reason why Mr. Rhodey is having these hissy fits, so we have to talk about it, is last year in this very time, there was a Board Bill brought by the Alderwoman from the fifth, and I was on HUDs then taking Mr. Alderman from the fourth place, and he asked to have a practice vote, and I said, "No, you can't do that." He got so mad, he got up and made a lot of misinformation, and put a lot of misinformation stamped out and left, and what he said was totally incorrect again, and I let him get away with it. I had even told an Alderperson, I won't say, "In this room, they know that I was going to bring it," but I let him get away with it, but he's not gonna get away with it anymore. He is the one that puts out misinformation. I would never purposely put out any misinformation on this floor, this Board of Alderman, and he ought to be ashamed of himself with his hissy fits, impugning my character when he is the one that was totally wrong, and he needs to come on this floor, Board of Alderman, and to apologize to me and the good citizens of St. Louis when he puts out misinformation like that.
All right, thank you, thank you, Alderwoman. Any, we would... Any, we would, announcements?
Thursday, Public Safety Committee meeting at ten a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Friday, full board meeting, ten a.m. in the chambers, that's the extent of my announcements.
Any further announcements, any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the Alderman from the fourteenth, seventeenth, twenty-first, twenty-six, and twenty-seventh be excused for necessary absence.
It's been moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, entertain a second on that motion. Second by the Alderman from the sixth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the Board of Aldermen adjourns until Friday, January twenty-ninth, ten a.m.
Been moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, second by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, stand adjourned.